Officially call the meeting to order tonight. I'm going to ask tonight if Commissioner Edwards would lead us in our invocation, and Commissioner Henderson would lead us in our pledge, please.
Bow your heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful fall day. Dear Lord, we ask that you watch over us, guide us, give us strength and wisdom. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Before we adopt the agenda tonight, we have a couple of changes that we need to make. We need to add to the consent agenda tonight. Letter L. I'm sorry. Letter L Covington Newton 911 is receiving a credit for $25,000. Need to add, make that item L up under the consent agenda. We also need to remove item 10. Removing 15A and number 10 as well. And Covington Newton County 911 is receiving a $25,000 credit. We want to put that up under the consent agenda, letter L. With those changes, I seek a motion that will approve the agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards. And second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
On September 13th, I submitted two resolutions to our county attorney, which Quintley was forward to the chair and the county manager. My request was to have these resolutions reviewed by legal counsel before the presentation to the board. Additionally, I requested that these resolutions be included on the agenda for today, but I am also open to them being scheduled for the first agenda in October. These resolutions are important for the betterment of our community and organization. Specifically, the resolutions address the following issue. Resolution one, whereas it's imperative that employees are not subjected to bullying, excessive micromanagement or discrimination, but instead are encouraged to engage in open and respectful communication. As the governing body of Newton County, we take a firm stance in safeguarding the rights and well-being of our employees, ensuring they have the confidence and freedom to voice their concerns without fear. The fact that our recent management reviews obtained consistent information from a supermajority of the board members without prior consultation are shared information speaks volumes. Resolution number two was submitted. Effective communication and responsiveness are essential elements of transparent and accountable governance in Newton County. And whereas it is duty of Newton County government to properly address the inquiries and concerns of our valid residents, dedicated staff and employees and esteemed elected officials, Newton County has not established a formal response time for addressing the needs of our residents, staffs or official. We received numerous complaints from our residents about delayed responses from the county when seeking assistance. I can personally confirm similar challenges in obtaining timely responses to address the needs of my constituents. Additionally, our staff members have expressed their frustration as they have await responses from various individuals to progress with their essential tasks. The resolution makes sure that we align our principles of the One Newton and have clear, measurable objectives. They are essential for fostering a respectful and responsive community and government. I mentioned this when I first came in office in 2021, that One Newton currently does not have a mission statement nor objectives. So I assisted with identifying and writing those components, and would love to get a response to the document once presented for feedback from my colleagues. I kindly request that these resolutions be added to the agenda for discussion and consideration during the upcoming meetings. Your consideration of this matter is greatly appreciated. I anticipate the opportunity to engage in a comprehensive discussion of these resolutions with the entire board during the upcoming October meeting. I want to formally acknowledge that I am submitting this request again within a public meeting to the residents of Newton County, our dedicated staff, the entire board, and the county clerk. Madam Deputy County Clerk, can you please document this statement in your records? Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passed 5-0, thank you. Next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. You may comment at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Thank you. I don't have anything. In the chairman's report, we're going to yield our time to the county manager, Mr. Cooper. County manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members and citizens, today I have come before you with the county manager's approach, I mean, report, excuse me. We will always subscribe to the three P approach, people, purpose, and processes. Today, we're going to focus on people and processes. The person that I want to acknowledge this evening is our new information systems director, Mr. Michael Bodine. Could you please stand, sir? Michael took the helm with us on September 11th. What's really important about his tenure here is that he has a vested interest in the community, being a Covington citizen. So, Michael, we want to thank you for being a part of the team. We look forward to some of the great things that you have in store for us in our IT department. The second P that we're going to discuss today is in relationship to our processes and in relationship to our appropriation processes with Washington Street Community Center. As you all know, Washington Street is a staple in this community. The work that's being done by this program speaks for itself. They address needs of our youth and our adults in a holistic manner. Some of the initiatives that they have and have initiated in reference to the community are STEM programs, tutorial sessions, agriculture education, computer education, and summer enrichment programs. Their programming is community-based, and they hear the cry of our citizens. When we talk about appropriations, we need to talk about the relevant history associated with appropriations. This distinguished board on May 18th, 2021, adopted an external appropriation policy for 501(c)(3). On June 28th, 2022, this board adopted a resolution in relationship to the appropriations of 11 entities, some of them quasi nonprofits, and two nonprofits in particular, one being Washington Street. On August 2nd, 2022, this board made a motion to approve the payment of comprehensive audits of our nonprofit institutions. As a result of that, Washington Street had Benny C. Phillips do a comprehensive financial review of their financial records for the years of 2019, 2020, and 2021. Hence, that's why we're here today. Let's take a deeper dive in their 2019 financial report and 2020, as well as 2021. As I stated, the reviews were conducted by the Phillips Group. Based on the 2019 financials, there was no need for any type of modifications to the financial statements provided by Washington Street. It suggested that they were financially and economically responsible in their efforts to serve their population. When you look at their assets, expense, and cash flow information, the asset sheet showed liabilities and net assets. Their net assets for 2019 was $32,000. When you look at their expense sheet, there was standard spending in the areas of programming, management, and general expenses and fundraising. Their total expenses was over $254,000. Their cash flow sheet showed $22,605 on hand for the 2019 year. When you look at their 2020 financials, more of the same, stability. There was no material modification needed based on the review of the Phillips Group. Again, the assets and liability sheets shows the following. The net assets were $146,933. The expense sheet showed the standard spending in the areas of programming, management, general and fundraising expenses. Those expenses was just under $250,000. When you look at the cash flow information, it showed that they had $128,159 at the end of that year. Based on the financial review of 2021, it was concluded that no material modification should be made again to their financial statements. Their liabilities and net assets showed a net asset of $146,000. The expense sheet showed $310,000 of spending, all in the areas of management, general funding, and fundraising. And the cash flow sheet showed $123,000. When you look at the three-year period and look at the financial averages, their asset average was $108,000 a year. The expense average was $271,000 a year, and their cash flow average was just over $91,000 a year. So what they have shown is that they are the model of consistency when it comes to being financially responsible. So hats off to Washington Street. So at this time, I would like for representatives from Washington Street to come up to the podium and talk about some of the comprehensive programming and talk about the need for their appropriations. Ms. Beatrice Jackson, Ms. Esquire Latoya Reed, if you all can come to the podium. Lakia Reed, I apologize.
Good evening to each of you.
Good evening.
Thank you for all of you commissioners allowing us to come speak. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, County Manager. And to all the citizens of Newton County, we definitely appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. More importantly, we appreciate the opportunity to serve your children. And so, that being said, I would love for our Director, Ms. B., to take it forward and let you all hear a little bit from her about Washington Street.
Okay, you can help me out by handing out these handouts if you would, please.
And I'll be her banner white since she's going to be my...
Yes. Thank you so much, and good evening, commissioners. It's our pleasure to be here with you this evening. And I would like to respond to Mr. Cooper by saying that is, in fact, an accurate reflection of our work, our finances, and our records. We are an amazing, amazing nonprofit that serves the citizens of Newton County. I have been in this position for 20-plus years, I'm not going to fill in the blanks, but I have been and have watched the center grow from a mere $70,000 struggle to where we are today. We are proud of our efforts. We really feel that we have done much to improve the lives of our youth and their families in programs for children when school is out. We like to look at and think of ourselves as leveling the playing field. Kids we see today come in many different stages, much like the kids that you all probably see as well. We have some who are proficient learners. They come from our theme schools and some of our better schools around the county. We also have kids who are faring pretty well overall, but could use a little help and assistance with some of their academic work. We also, though, have encountered another group of students who, in fact, are in dire need of a lot of help and support. These are children who were caught up as a part of the pandemic, and so they've lost time in school. They've lost time and connections with people. They are far behind their reading levels of where it is that they should, in fact, be. We have adjusted our programs to meet the needs of those students, of all of our students. And we do that by assessments. We take a look at, and we do that often. We also, we take a look at how they're performing and where the short changes come, and we design a program that is tailored specifically for them. We now refer to our after-school program as an after-school intervention program, and we have been doing this work for the last couple of years. We have over 50 kids registered to us this year. When our registration polls opened earlier in August, and within two days, we had over 196 people register for our program. We can only take 40, but we stretched and we took 50 because we wanted to serve as many children as we possibly could within our means. Our numbers reflect our program, and the people wanting to come into our center to have their children enrolled in our programs speaks volumes just to the registration numbers Student assessments and the work that we do with our kids, we like to think of ourselves as helping to level the playing field for those students who need us most. We are still going to serve those kids regardless of what happens here with this body. We have continued to serve them regardless of the actions that's been taken care, taken as a result of this body, as a result of audits, as a result of financial reviews. So I'm happy that we could come to this conclusion tonight, that I would like to think that all of you would agree that we are, in fact, deserving of the funds that we request from our Newton County Commission in order to help support, along with us, our board, and all of those other funders out there that believe in the work that we're doing. We'd like you to think of the work that we're doing in an exceptional way. I provided for you some statistics from evaluations that we have received, not only from those bodies who come to evaluate us every year for our, to see our effectiveness, as well as you have what parents are saying about the program themselves and how they feel about it. But we'd like you to know what those things are and where we stand. We just ask for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioner Henderson? Thank you. First of all, it'd be once again, I want to apologize to you for having Washington Street go through what y'all had did in the past few months. It was supposed to be, it was supposed to have been a three-year review for Washington Street and for that particular time Nelson Heights too as well. But somehow or another, you know, it just changed. We were the only two of our school, on two programs, that were looked at and passed by. I think I remember Patrick saying, say, well, just cut them off too. And it's nice, but just think how much they have set our kids behind. You know, it's one thing taking over, and we're talking about Nelson Heights, and I'm not talking about Washington Street. One thing taking over a program, which we do nothing but lock the gates. I think that's not right. It's my own personal opinion. And I had, and I said, because that's who I am. I won't talk behind your back. I'll talk in front of your face. I won't ask you to leave the room. I tell you, stay in the room, and we have a conversation. But I'm sorry that in order to do what they wanted to and did to Nelson Heights, that they finally came back and regrouped and brought back Washington Street because it's also in District 4, and it's a program too that I had helped to a certain degree, along with Mr. Pitts and our others. And still, I'm very proud of it too as well. And Ms. Jackson, to Washington Street, we thank you.
Thank you. And just to be very transparent, so although we definitely appreciate being here, and we appreciate you all taking the consideration to provide Washington Street with the funding, one thing that this board did not do was allow the students to fail. We did not allow the program to stop because the allocations didn't come. But I do want to thank my board for always stepping in to provide those funds before we ask anybody or the county, this board provides. And so, we definitely appreciate your help, but we will never allow the students here in Newton County to fail.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. B., I just couldn't, I can't thank you enough, and I can't, couldn't be more ecstatic about a, about an appropriation. I look at the metrics on the first page of these documents you handed us, and the skit, the kids and the parents both, on an average, way over 95% probably in their total satisfaction of what they're doing. And let me tell you, my wife's a third grade teacher, and what you said is exactly correct in terms of what the pandemic did to our youth. She believes, this is just her opinion and some of her colleagues' opinions, that our children lost a year and a half to the pandemic academically. She teaches third grade, and she's got some that she feels that are mid-first grade at best in all skills. So there's a challenge, and I appreciate you filling in that gap with what you do so much. And I'll, you know, we've had a little setback here in the recent months, but hopefully we'll be back on track very soon. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders?
Just echoing the sentiments of my colleagues, I want to thank you for serving definitely the underserved community because there's not many nonprofits. I think you and Nelson Heights were probably the only two that was catering to the underserved youth. And so I want to thank you so much for all that you do, your board stepping in and taking care of our children, because our children are the most important. Thank you again.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. B. Thank you, Attorney, for your presentation on today. I have personally witnessed the great works that Washington Street has done, and I think even the statistical data that you provided to us today just further confirms the great work that you're doing within the community. Even when I look at the diversity that you have in the percentage of African-American, 93%, 4% Hispanic, 2% white. And so to be able to even have, provide that diversity within the community, I think really helps as well. Even recently, as far as having the community garden that you have actually implemented within the community to bring the community together, to bring the kids together, to work on activities and programs that's really going to help further them from an educational perspective. I've seen the kids come where you had them playing the instruments there, just listening to them sing and play the instruments. When you come to the center and you actually see how the center is set up, it's neat, it's clean, it's well-kept. When you see what you're doing in the community, I just want to applaud you for the work that you're doing and for being a major asset in this community. So I just wanted to say thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you. What I said, is there a, anybody want to make a motion to amend the agenda to, because Mr. Cooper asked to get them their funding tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to, Commissioner Mason?
Mr. Chair, yes. I'll definitely go ahead and make a motion that we add Washington Street Community Center to the agenda for discussion, and I believe it's to make a decision or vote on providing them with their funding.
We can go ahead and do that now, can't we? Is there a second? Is there a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by, I'm not sure who was it, Commissioner Edwards or Commissioner Henderson?
Yes, you just did what I was thinking. It would be to give them all the monies that they had, that the county had withheld, and I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure there was a certain amount of money. I think the last I thought, I think about 15 or 20,000 plus the, 20,000. 20,000 plus the monthly, I think it was like $3,333.
It's close.
I'm sorry, my math is terrible. But I understand, you know, that probably what the county gives, so we're looking about 20,000 plus, how many months have we, have we missed?
Since March.
Ma'am, since March. Do you have somebody in finance here, with County Manager, Ms. Cooper? Could you calculate that for me, please, and give us an accurate number? Because we want to make sure, I would like to make sure that they get, if it's approved, they get all the money that the county has withheld from them.
Ms. White will provide that figure for us, sir.
When may she provide that figure?
Ms. Brittany White will provide that figure. She's available right now.
Yeah, let's do this. Hold on for one second. Let's get it on the agenda first, and then you can give Commissioner his request. Is there a motion to put it on the agenda? All in favor? Thank you. It's been added to the agenda. I'm going to go ahead and use the chairman's privilege now to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve. So Mr. Henderson can get his question in.
Do you know what to do to hide them?
We're going to use, we're going to do it now. We're going to do it right now. I'm using chairman's privilege to go ahead and get this over with now. Is there a motion?
So move, I guess.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Advance, advance funding, advance the unpaid, unpaid allocations to Washington Street, and Brittany will tell you. Of course, that would be the highest, that's it. We're just going to do it right now. It'll be a, a...
Is there, is there a second? Commissioner Edwards, thank you. Is there a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards? Now, Commissioner Henderson, ask your question.
It's the original question I had. How much money is due to Washington Street? And I think, thank you, Ms. Brittany, for helping us out.
I'm not prepared with an exact number because I did not know we were going to be asked this question, but I'm going to give you my best estimate. They are still owed April, May, and June for fiscal year 2023. Their appropriation amount is roughly $3,333 a month. So April, May, June, so we're looking at right at $10,999. They're also owed for fiscal year '24, and their appropriation amount was the same. So they're owed July and August, and then they'll also be owed September, so another roughly $10,000. So at this time, they would be owed around $20,000.
I guess my last, the last question is, is once we approve it, then the check will be cut to Washington Street? Maybe that's legal. Patrick?
Once the board authorizes the release of those monthly allocations, Brittany will be authorized to issue a check or multiple checks, however it is she does it, in those amounts. And she may have to do two, one for fiscal year '23, however she needs to do it. And she will also be authorized going forward to release their regular monthly allocation without further action from the board.
Absolutely. Any more discussion? Thank you. This is item, this is going to replace number 10 on the agenda, item number 10. Thank you, thank you so much. All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Ms. Cooper, we're going to revert back to your county manager's report. Thank you, sir. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is actually going to be item number...
Consent agenda. We're going to revert back to the consent agenda.
Okay, so we do have the consent agenda, which is item number nine.
Thank you. I seek a motion that will approve the consent agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you so much, and we did number 10, which was, where we added to the agenda Washington Street. So now we'll pick up at item number 11.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, we do have item number 11 that will be presented by our attorney, Mr. Patrick Jogstetter. The first item would be consideration of proposed annexation of map and parcels 0083-012, 0083-013, 0083-014, located at 10593. zero, zero, eight, three dash zero, one, three, zero, zero, eight, three dash zero, one, four, located at one, oh, five, nine, three, and one, oh, seven, zero, one, highway thirty-six. The second would be consideration of proposed annexation of, proposed annexation of map and parcels zero, zero, seven, nine dash zero, zero, nine, B, located at Flat Rock Road.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'll just do it from here if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
So, Board, in your agenda packet, there are notices from the city of Covington regarding two annexations. I'm gonna take them up one at a time. The first annexation request that you have received is a property owner, two property owners, R.S. Holdings LLC and Jared Rutberg. It is their desire to annex into the city of Covington three separate parcels, one, zero, five, nine, three, one, zero, six, set, zero, three, and one, zero, seven, zero, one, highway thirty-six. The annexation would proceed such that the properties would then become part of the city of Covington, and they are seeking to zone those properties in the city of Coving, Covington into the mixed-use criteria for, for commercial use. Your zoning staff has analyzed these annexation requests in order to determine whether they would create an undue burden on the county, which is the basis for the county to assert an objection, which would kick us into an arbitration proceedings. And in order to find sufficient grounds for an objection, you must determine that as a result of the annexation and change in zoning, there will be an increased burden upon the county to provide its public services. The analysis, as I read it from your staff, concluded that there was, in this instance, there was no such burden. The property is contiguous to existing city limits, and it would be a lawful annexation. Despite the, the staff's finding, you are authorized, if you believe there is an, there is an undue burden, if you believe there's a burden resulting from this annexation and rezoning, you are authorized to assert an objection. I don't mind telling you, it's just like any other zoning request. You act contrary to your experts, your zoning staff's recommendation. Makes it a little more difficult to be successful in defending the challenge, but you certainly have the right to do so. The, the properties are currently zoned, and I want to make sure, and Ms. Appleweight's here, she can correct me if I get it wrong. They are currently zoned to a number of conditions regarding combining them into a, what, what do we call it? A small subdivision, is that what it was called? And their request indicates that they intend to comply with those conditions. There's no guarantee that they will, will, but the request they submitted to the city suggests that they might do so. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer for you.
I think this is in district, I don't know what district it is. I think this is in district five, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Cowan? Four? Five, yeah. I think it's five. Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the annexation on highway thirty-six of the three parcels.
Is there a second? There's been a motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next zoning app, or annexation application is, property that this board is much more familiar with. This property is located roughly at Flat Rock, Flat Rock Road and Gregory Road. On the screen in front of you, it is the sort of humpback-shaped parcel. It is a portion of parcel zero, zero, seven, nine, zero, zero, nine on your tax maps. It is adjacent to the pinkish-colored property immediately to the south, which is already in the city of Covington. So the applicant in this instance has applied to annex that property into the city of Covington. The applicant is JBW Investments. You might remember this. It's been in front of you twice in the recent past. In June, this property came in front of you for a rezoning to the M-two industrial district. This board approved that rezoning, subject to a number of conditions. The annexation, annexation application indicates that they intend to zone the property within the city of Covington to the city of Covington's M-two zoning classification. Again, like the previous application, your staff analyzed it and found that while there is increased use of the property, because it's vacant today, I'd remind you, you have already zoned the property to the M-two zoning classification. Typically, there needs to be a change in zoning to authorize you to make an objection. There is a potential, however, that the conditions you impose at the rezoning back in June would not carry over. And that could provide the basis for an objection if the board so chooses. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but.
Thank you. I'm not sure what's the district this is, but I seek a motion, please.
That's in five as well.
It's five. Let me ask a couple of questions. Patrick, what you're saying then is the conditions we put on as regarding roads, traffic coming in off of Gregory Road, Flat Rock Road, and onto this property, may not apply if it's put into the city. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would be the city's decision as to whether or not to impose conditions and what conditions to impose.
Okay, if those are put into deed, as a deed restriction, it would.
If they're in a deed restriction, they would, they would apply regardless of.
And we asked them to do that.
We could certainly make that request. In order to do that, because of the time limits, under Georgia law, we would need to assert an objection today. And that would give a, that would trigger an opportunity to both negotiate with the property owner and the city while we sort of walk down the path, path to arbitration.
Hey, guys, let's, uh, let's get a motion on the floor so we can discuss this. We get a motion on the floor.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what my motion is. Hang on, I'm just trying to get a little information. Okay, I make a motion to approve the annexation of the property off of Flat Rock Road into the city limits.
Is there a second? There's been a motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Now let's open it up for discussion. Any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
So there's a very good possibility, Patrick, that, that the city of Covington could be, he could have this rezoned to be much, much less restrictive, right?
The, the city of Covington could rezon the property without the conditions that this board put on. In the absence of an objection, even with an objection, if, if you ultimately are unsuccessful at arbitration, the city could do that anyway. But if you don't assert an objection, the only opportunity anyone will have to try to carry those, those restrictions over would be either negotiation with the property owner of the city or at the city's rezoning process, because there'll still need to be public hearings at the city for the rezoning, just like you have public hearings. And if I recall, there was a decent amount of citizen opposition. And those citizens are certainly going to be free to go to the city of Covington and make their, make the same objections, address the same concerns. And the city could impose those conditions, but there's simply no guarantee. This process does not guarantee they will do so. And just like you, they can't commit today to zone the property until, how they're gonna zone the property until they have their public hearings.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, is it okay to ask Ms. Appleweight a question?
Ms. Director Appleweight, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. So if I, if I recall, when the board approved this, this current zoning for this property back in June, right? The plans were for a data center, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so his current zoning allows for a data center?
It does.
So his, to your knowledge, has his, have his plans changed?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
So it makes me wonder why he would need a zoning, he wouldn't have moved it to the city of Covington so he could have it rezoned?
I can't answer that question with any certainty. My guess would be because this one parcel is about fifteen acres, is connected to the other four-hundred-acre industrial park. And it probably is easy from an administrative standpoint that you're taxed the same and all of that kind of stuff. In fact, if, I am fairly confident that one of the conditions we imposed in the zoning.
Ryan and Cowan asked that. I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cowan asked that it would be only utilized.
It was limited to use of the data center. And I also think that we require, one of the, one of the conditions was to, I'm looking at it to see now, was to plant it with the rest of the, with the rest, maybe it wasn't. I'm, I'm looking at the conditions. I'm not seeing that right now. But was there, maybe you remember, was there a condition about joining it with the remainder of the industrial park?
We, we would not have imposed that condition. It causes a different jurisdiction.
Right.
But our conditions were limited just to the fifteen-plus acres where the entrance, we agreed the entrance would not be off of Flat Rock or Gregory Road. It would be internal to the city. And they had to put their buffers and berm and so on in.
There was an earthen berm around the portion of the property that abutted Flat Rock, Flat Rock and Gregory Road. It was eight-foot, eight-foot earthen berm that was planted. And there was a limitation on direct vehicular access to either Flat Rock or Gregory Road, which would have required internal access throughout the existing, existing development.
So what, what, I think you just, Commissioner, addressed the Commissioners, Cowan's question is, these conditions can, they, they can only be carried to the city if we, if we let them annex it through a, through, through the, the formal objection process, right?
Well, we can't compel it, but we would have an opportunity to engage in the arbitration process and try to convince them to accept these conditions. It, it's, it would be leverage, or else we would just go through the arbitration process, essentially litigate whether this is an appropriate annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. How much money, more money would we be spending as far as legal fees as us arbitrating? And, and the bottom line is, is that we, we, that property can be annexed, a partial property by the property owner, if he or she so chooses to do. So why are we taking good money, and we always do this, take good money and give it to the attorneys and let, and vote to annex, annex, I mean, vote to approve this, this property and let the city of Covington deal with it?
Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan.
It's my understanding, and I recently got a text message, it says the city planning commission has recommended approval of annexation with the same conditions that the county had. So they've approved it with the same conditions that we put on there. Just want to clear that up.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number twelve. Through our finance department, our director, Ms. Brittany White, will present the fiscal year twenty-three year-end budget amendments.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. You have four budget amendments in your agenda packet. I've numbered them all so that we can all be on the same page when I discuss them. I think I would like to do motions on all of them. That way, we can approve them one at a time. And then these should, this should cover most of our FY twenty-three year-end. We're still in the final closeout stages and reconciliation phases, so there could be potentially a couple more coming over the next couple of meetings, but this should capture most of the year-end needed entries. Number one, this one is to cover a contingency position that we had included in the FY twenty-three budget. This was a probate court deputy clerk. So we're just moving the money from contingency for new positions over to the employee line items in the probate clerk budget. Are there any questions about that?
So by moving the money, that would take care until the end of the year?
Well, this is.
That position?
This is FY twenty-three's budget, so twenty-three is technically, it ended June thirty, twenty twenty-three. So this is just to cover a position that was already hired.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? There's been a motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any, any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Amendment number two, this is to establish a budget for the DA's office. I think it's called the gun and gang or gang and violence position. This was a position that was board-approved on twelve, six, twenty twenty-two. This is just to establish the budget. So this was a position that was split between Covington, Monroe, Walton, and Newton. So this just recognizes the revenue that we received from Covington, Monroe, and Walton. And then we distributed out to the personnel line items, education and training, general supplies, gas, small equipment, and then a vehicle that they purchased. Are there any questions about that one?
Thank you. And Brittany, this is the same one that, okay, Brittany, this is the same one that our DA, Randy McGillin, came and presented to us?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
This is just the official budget transfer.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, Brittany, can you remind us how much was the, the cost, the total amount of the budget?
He was asking that every jurisdiction contribute thirty thousand dollars. So it was us, Covington, Monroe, and Walton, so that would be a total of a hundred and twenty thousand.
And that is for one position or that's just including supplies and the position?
It was the position, and then it was a vehicle for that person, and then gas, small equipment, so like a computer, I think a gun, and then education for that particular employee as well.
And just for clarity, this is something that we're gonna be supporting every budget?
Yeah, he was gonna, I think he was gonna continue to go to all the jurisdictions and ask them to fund it each year.
Any more discussion? Well, let me get a motion, please. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second? There's been a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes five oh.
The third one is to correct the over-budget departments in the general fund. So we are going to utilize excess revenue that we had in loss collections and interest income. And then we're going to disperse that out. So that total is eight hundred, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine, fifty-nine dollars. We're going to disperse that out to the juvenile for their regular employee line items for a total of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and thirteen. That is to cover a new position that was budgeted by the board, or approved by the board in March, twenty twenty-two. They didn't hire until June, so it didn't make its way into our payroll projection. So that, that position was just left off their budget, so they need these funds to cover that position. The next is seventy-five thousand in repairs and maintenance in vehicles for Fleet. Fleet just seen such an increase. We've already had to come one time and get extra funds for them. They've just seen such an increase in, in the cost of parts, so they just needed this to offset their repairs and maintenance in vehicles line. So that's seventy-five thousand. The other one is for recreation. This is to recognize, this was a line item that was just inadvertently left out of the budget. So one of the recreation employees is actually an employee of the, of the city of Covington. So we reimbursed the city of Covington for that salary, and this was just left off. And then they also had an increase in their electric expenses. So we're giving them a hundred and forty thousand in intergovernmental expense and then fifteen thousand in electricity. The next is for fire. In the payroll projection, the benefits were left off for the vacant positions. So this would just be giving them a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for health insurance and seventy thousand for FICA. The HR budget, they, they also had vacancies that were left off payroll projection. So they're getting ten thousand for health insurance, five thousand for FICA. The wellness budget, we're still trying to work out the details with Cigna on how much they owe us back for wellness in twenty-three. I don't think those negotiations are gonna be finalized before the end of the year. So I just want to go ahead and get their budget corrected instead of, since I think this may drag on. When we, if we do get the money, it'll just go in FY twenty-four. And then the next line item is for other appropriations. These are the appropriations we gave to Rainbow Community Center for the warming shelter, Friends of Newton County Miracle Field for twenty-five thousand. And this is money that was just flowed through us through the city of Covington. So the city of Covington has to flow their appropriation money. We got revenue in return to offset this. And then also Newton Trails for the cricket frog trail condemnation that we gave them, a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and forty-six. We also received revenue to offset that. And then, yeah, not the MA, Extension Office, they need an additional seven thousand to help offset the five thousand dollar increase that the state gave employees. That was not known when we budgeted that that was coming. One of their employees is a state or their UGA. One of their employees is a state or their UGA employee. So all the UGA employees got the five thousand dollar increase, so they need seven thousand to offset the five thousand and then the um benefits and retirements to go along with that as well. And the last one is just an increase in revenue for our special assessment streetlights and then an increase in the electric because that is something that's collected on the tax bill. So there's just an offset of an increase in revenue and then a increase in expense. So that wraps that one up. I know there was a lot on that one, so are there any questions?
Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
My apologies if I overlooked it. I'm looking through the packet and I don't see everything that you read in office. There's so many numbers and figures that I wanted to follow along with you, so I don't see this in our packet that we were.
Number three.
Number three. No. And maybe I'm over, it's oversight for me, but I don't see it in our packet. Maybe it was eliminated. Oh, she emailed them separately, okay. I looked in the. Okay, okay. So that's, that's my error.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? I, I'm sorry?
No, I just wanted to make a comment just to piggyback off of, of what Ms. White stated earlier that there'll probably be some more amendments as we reconcile the budget for the twenty twenty-three in reference to our constitutional offices. I'm having some meetings with some of them uh for some reallocation, so I just wanted to put that uh on notice for the Board of Commissioners.
Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner um Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you, Brittany.
The last one, number four, this is just a budget amendment for our special revenue fund and this is our workers' comp fund. So we have started decreasing our um allocation from the general fund to the workers' comp fund over the last couple of years because there's been a fund balance that has built up in the workers' comp fund. And so this year we just needed to utilize some of that prior year fund balance that we had built up there. So this is just an amendment to recognize the prior year fund balance and then to just disperse it out to the line items that are needed. So we're recognizing two hundred and five thousand in fund balance, prior year fund balance, and then we're dispersing that out to the expense lines. Any questions on that one?
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, Brittany.
Mr. Chair, the next item is item number thirteen being presented by our probate judge. Ms. Melanie Bell, magistrate court, is requesting approval of an additional deputy clerk two position for magistrate court. Um, time sensitive, no, but the annual salary and benefits will be sixty-four thousand, seven sixty-seven and seventy-one cents.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, Commissioners, Chairman and Mr. Cooper, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight and to make this request of the board. Um, obviously I'm listed as probate judge Melanie Bell. I'm one of very few probate judges um in the state of Georgia that also serve as the chief magistrate. Um, and so this has to do with magistrate court. Um, I requested this position back when we submitted our budgets in February of twenty twenty-three for the FY twenty-four year. Um, it was not approved at that time. I know that a lot of position requests were not approved um due to um the board's decision, um, which I think should be applauded, to develop a pension program for um the employees. Um, but I want to, we're kind of in dire need of help and I'm going to go over a little bit of our numbers that support this. At first, we use a lot of words that make a lot of sense to us in magistrate court. Um, and so I just kind of want to go over those. Um, we are requesting a clerk two position. Um, we are a court that handles both civil and criminal matters. It's about fifty-fifty. Um, criminal matters would include the issuance of search warrants and arrest warrants twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, we also handle county ordinance matters from code enforcement and from animal services. Um, we conduct preliminary hearings for people that are still incarcerated to determine if there is sufficient evidence for their case to be prosecuted in Superior Court. And we also handle civilian or citizen warrant applications where law enforcement may not have taken a warrant or where it's commonly done by citizens, for example, an abandonment warrant. Um, and the person will fill out an application and will conduct those hearings as well. That's the sort of criminal side of what we do. Um, and then there's a civil side. We handle um dispossessories, which are commonly known as evictions. Um, we handle abandoned motor vehicles. You're thinking about, when you see these cars on the side of the road or on I-20 that are just sort of left there, the officers from the county will tag them after an appropriate time, they're towed and then they're held at a towing company when no one comes forward to claim it um in order for the towing company to be able to sell it and get it off their property and to recruit, recoup their expenses. They have to go through that process. Um, and then we have general civil filings, which we call statements of claims. Um, that's going to be just your typical civil case that you think of, like breach of contract. Um, it could be a um suit on account, meaning you didn't pay your belt bill or your, your chase or something like that. Um, and it can be other things. Um, any, we can, we have some car wreck cases. Um, personal injury cases that are held um in magistrate court, our jurisdictional limit is fifteen thousand dollars. So the magistrate court is known as the people's court across the state of Georgia. The idea is, while I always would suggest that you come to court with an attorney, the idea is that magistrate court is a place where the people can come in and represent themselves, um, get their day in court, they can get that quickly and efficiently. Um, and the processes are sort of um made a little bit easier. And by easier, I mean we have forms that you can fill out, um, that are put together by the um magistrate council of Georgia, instead of you having to come up with, how do I prepare a petition for disposessory or a petition for statement of claim? Um, Superior Court doesn't have a lot of those. Um, the other difference and the reason we move so fast is because we are what's called not a court of record. That means nothing to anyone other than to Patrick and Mr. Cowan, but it means there's no discovery process. And what that means is in Superior Court or in probate court, discovery can last six months to a year, um, especially on a car wreck case. A lot of people don't want to wait that long where it's a simple medical bill and simple damages. Um, and so they'll file in magistrate court because the process moves so quickly. Um, how quickly is pretty astonishing here, even given our um understaffed situation that we find ourselves in. So with our dispossessories, um, people have seven days to answer once they're served. Um, and as soon as they answer, we put them on the next available calendar. That's going to be within ten to fourteen days of them filing an answer. So we're moving those cases very quickly. Um, our statements of claim by law, once they file an answer, which is, um, you're suing me, here's why I say I don't owe you the money, um, we have to get them on a calendar within fifteen to thirty days. That doesn't happen in Superior Court and that's no knock against our Superior Court judges. That doesn't happen anywhere in Superior Court in the state of Georgia because that's just not how their um civil, uh, civil matters are scheduled. Um, and so it's a very quick process and it's supposed to be. We have always been very proud um of how quickly we move cases. Landlords and tenants say that um their experiences with our court are better than when they've dealt with other courts. They're more quick and they're more efficient. However, we're finding ourselves in a position where it's becoming difficult to maintain where we're at and to maintain what are our statutory um requirements. So um I originally asked for the position, as I said, back in February when I sent my budget into HR and Finance. Um, that's because there was an increase from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two in disposessory filings of nine hundred and seventy-four cases. That's a nine at the beginning. That's a lot of cases to influx into our court. Um, so almost a thousand cases, that's why I met with the other judges and we decided that it was appropriate to ask for the position. We understand um what your decision was at the time. However, our situation instead of even maintaining that level has gotten worse. Um, I kind of put together for you my very first graph I've ever made. Um, and it kind of gives you just a sort of general idea, we're moving up in every stage. Um, but some things I want to point out from the last few years, um, just our numbers for twenty twenty-three I ran through last Friday, which is September fifteenth. Um, and I compared those numbers to September fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. So we're comparing apples to apples. Um, so in that same nine-month period, we have handled this year, we have had one hundred and forty-six more statements of claim. We have had seven hundred and ninety-one more dispossessories filed than last year. Um, and so that we're at a total of nine hundred and fifty-seven more cases. So we're looking to finish um anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand more cases this year than we handled last year. Um, I only have um five clerks assigned to that court. Um, three of them have appeared today to support me in um our request. They are all very hardworking. Um, we have been doing a little bit of everything to get by. Um, we have had um people volunteer to file for us because we can't file. We're that backed up. Um, we have had people, um, you know, doing extra time if they need to. We, that's of course costs a lot of money, um, so I've tried to avoid that as much as possible. Judge Bryant and I kept track of our hours in August of twenty twenty-three. She and I together, we're the two people there full-time. We each, or we together spent twenty hours where we were only doing clerk work. So no judge work was taking place for twenty hours in August between Judge Bryant and I. We were filing in paperwork, we were getting stuff ready for service, we were getting, um, she was doing consent judgments on Friday, or not consent judgments, uh, default judgments. That may sound normal to you, it's not. Now, I have always had the policy that I am not above anything. I know how to work the front desk at both probate and magistrate court. I know how to answer the phones um and deal with the public because I'm not going to ask my employees to do anything that I don't know how to do and I'm not willing to do. That being said, no one has benefited when judges are doing clerk work um because when we're doing that, we're not in the courtroom and we are not um preparing orders from other cases. Keep in mind, as I said, too, Judge Bryant and I are both full-time, but we are full-time in two courts. Um, so we have a lot to get done from the hearings we hold in various court. Um, we are in court five days a week, um, in magistrate court alone. We, we are in court four days a week. The only day we don't have magistrate court is Tuesdays and that's because probate court uses both courtrooms for our large traffic calendars. So we are moving cases as best we can. The judges are there to serve. We have um also our part-time associates, um, Judge Tammy Wells Thomas and Judge John DeGonya. Um, and we are moving cases as quickly as we can in the courtroom. The problem is, you finish your case in court and then we don't have time to prepare the order because we're getting ready for the next day's court and there's no one in the office that can prepare that order. So it slows down the process. We have um, you know, getting people are complaining and they're saying, why can't you move as quickly as you used to? And we're explaining to them because we're handling way more cases than we did. This year alone, we have already had more filings than we did for all of twenty twenty-one. Um, and the thing, I told my clerks when they came in tonight, the thing I didn't tell y'all today when we were preparing is I've looked and since twenty eighteen, in the last four months of the years, year, we typically have between one thousand and fifteen hundred cases filed. So these numbers are not going to get better, they're expected to get worse. The other thing you may want to know as far as requesting this position is, um, is this a permanent thing or is this sort of, you know, an aberration? This is just happening this year. Well, if you look, our disposessory numbers have continued to go up and up and up. Um, that's not going to change, that's just population change. Um, and we do have more apartments than we used to, um, because we see dispossessories from both apartments, but we also see them from landlords that may own, you know, fifteen, twenty properties or just, you know, a single per, single property where it's maybe family property that they rent out. So we kind of see everybody, but, you know, I talked to y'all about this when I presented my budget. Regardless of what your opinions are on apartments that continue to be built in the county and in the city, more apartments mean more dispossessories. That's just the reality of the situation. Now, um, the last thing I want to tell you is that I've also provided for you to back up this request. I looked at what our sort of um projected population is um for right now. As you know, that's obviously gone up since the twenty twenty census, though those are our official um numbers. And if you look, I've also given you, I've pulled Fayette County, Lounes County, Newton County, Bartow County, Whitfield County and Walton County. Um, Fayette and Lounes have more population than us, but not significantly. Um, and um Bartow, Whitfield and Walton are all um a little bit smaller. That's the last page of your packet and you'll see that all of those courts have at least seven clerks working in just magistrate court. And um Lounes County, who only has um about two thousand more in population than us, they have nine. Um, so I'd love to come in here and have you approve two new positions, as with my staff who's back there. Um, but we are asking that you provide us this one position so that we can continue to provide the services that the court needs to provide and we want to provide. We are a people-driven court, as I told you. Um, I got with um Director Shoemaker, her staff was able to pull together that a um deputy clerk two position, including benefits um and taxes and all of that, as you see, would be sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. The number they gave me as of September fifth, which is when I made the request for them to pull those numbers together, um, is the uh rest of the money that would be paid out in FY twenty twenty-four is fifty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Um, so I'm just here on behalf of the clerks and judges of the magistrate court to request that you will um fund this position for us.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I get a motion, please? Is there a second? She did it, I'm sorry. It was a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner um Edwards. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, Judge Bell, for your presentation. Uh, just a question, have you seen an increase of evictions uh since we've gone through the pandemic and so forth dealing with our constituents, landlords and the rent? Is, has there been an increase in your office dealing with those?
There hasn't been an increase in the sense that we had high numbers in twenty nineteen, pre-pandemic. Um, what we're seeing is addresses that we've never had before. And so it's new properties that did not exist previously and dispossessories being filed on those properties. So it, to what we're seeing, it's not dealing with pandemic, it's dealing with just increase in population.
And the reason why I was asking that question, and I'm going to speak on that later so we won't take up time, is that I did submit to the board assistance policies to help with that, which is rent control and stabilization to help with the decrease of that happening with your office where we can put certain things in place as local elected officials to help with that and it won't be an increase in your office. If we do put that in place, it would also help the un-housed here in Newton County as well. So hopefully we can get that in place and that our, my colleagues can look at those policies to help out your office.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, what I wanted to ask you was that, I, I noticed, because I drive away all the time there on Thursday, Saturday, there's just so many apartments. And then there, there are plans to build even more apartments here in Covington. And so with all those apartments and both apartments, there are going to be a lot of people, more people really just kind of being put out because they're not paying the rent or whatever might come off. So I, I guess the question is, you were just putting a band-aid on about asking for, asking for one employee. And uh because I think it may be in the next six months to a year, you're going to have, come back up here and you're going to say, well, I need another employee, another clerk. And so um, you know, I, I would hope that our fellow commissioners, especially since I can kind of sense in your voice that you're just being overworked. I can sense that because I know about being overworked. And uh, is there any way that we could uh, uh, just look at two, two peoples and they would give a, a little bit of breath to help with uh, what's happening around us in our community? The growth right now, to me, at least what I'm seeing, is something just off the chain.
I mean, I certainly say yes, but that may not be.
Let me, let me check. Um, Commissioner Henderson, was, was that a substitute motion?
To motion? I'd like to make a substitute motion that uh, that we give our judge two, um, what's, what's the proper name? two, um, what's, what's the proper name for those?
Deputy clerk two.
Two deputy cler- clerks in the hopes that maybe next year or so, you know, she kind of maybe settle down a little bit and, and, uh, around the next period of time, she will need maybe quite as many.
Is there a second? It was a motion by, um, it was a substitute motion made by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner, um, Cowan. End of discussion. Um, Commissioner Edwards and then Commissioner Mason.
Wouldn't we want to see the impact of one clerk before we add two? I mean, the, the, our probate judge has come before us for, for one position right now. I'm certainly open mind, open to a, a second position, but we don't understand the, the impact of, of the one position yet. Uh, my understanding, we're eight hundred, or did I hear we're eight hundred cases?
We're almost, as of Friday, we're, um, nine hundred cases over last year.
Okay, and I'm, I'm, I'm certainly open to, to discussion later for another, a second position. Um, uh, if, 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 if one is not digging into this amount, but I, I don't, you know, we're going to have, um, uh, there's a lot of departments that would like to have more positions, but, um, I think we ought to see the impact of this one first. And, and in two months, we can look at it again. Just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm actually in agreement. I want to kind of see what the impact is going to be for this one. Um, and just to kind of see where these additional fundings are going to come from as well, uh, since it wasn't in our original budget for, um, that we approved back in June. And so, um, I, I think we kind of really want to, before we put, uh, the cart before the horse, um, because as you stated, Judge, there are several departments that, that, uh, are wanting to request and that more than likely may need it. Uh, but of course, we did put that pension in place, which kind of, uh, prevented us from, you know, adding more positions than we would have liked to be able to help. Um, but we felt that that pension was very, very important. Uh, and I think, uh, all of our staff and employees, um, would agree that it was, uh, definitely a great thing to put that pension in place. So I think, uh, it would behoove this board to kind of really look at that position, uh, and then you kind of see how it works. And then if you see where you're still kind of behind or you're still not getting there, then I would definitely encourage you to come back before us to kind of have that discussion again to let us know what's going on at that point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you. And this question is to Ms. Brittany.
Hold on one second, hold on one second. Uh, Ms. Brittany, could you come up, please?
Thank, thank you, C.
And I did, of course, speak with Ms. White prior to making the request.
Go ahead, Ms. Brittany.
I guess the question is, what I asked, if I may, if I may, uh, was, could we have two positions? How would that affect our budget? And, and I just want to just add some, throw a little something in there too as well. Uh, we're talking about the defined benefit, and it has nothing to do with these two positions that we're talking about, has nothing. So, you know, I don't know why we're talking about a, uh, benefit plan for our employees, when the question is, can we afford to have a two-position for our judge?
I'm going to just, um, speak on the budget numbers. The, I did speak with Judge Bell prior to this, and I told her if, if I was asked my recommendation for funding for this would be out of the contingency line item. So in the FY twenty-four budget, we did have a hundred and fifty thousand in contingency. So if you approve this tonight, then what we would do is we would remove fifty-three thousand from contingency and transfer her to budget. Two would be right around one oh three, so that would leave you with roughly forty-seven thousand. I think that's a board decision of whether you're comfortable with having forty-seven thousand dollars in contingency for the remaining of the year.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sanders?
Just, this is for Brittany as well, I was going to ask that same question. Is there any other departments that you know of right offhand? I know we're putting you on the spot, that's in need of a position at this particular time?
We had over, I think it was close to a hundred positions that were asked in the budget, and we approved three or four, so there's, so there's need by other departments, yes.
Thank you. Um, there's a substitute motion on the floor, uh, was presented by Commissioner Cowan, uh, that we add two more. No, no. Total two, that was presented by Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry. And it was second by Commissioner Cowan. Um, I'm going to call for that motion, all in favor? All in, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a two-two. I'm going to break that motion, I'm going to break the tie, um, um. I'm going to break that tie, um, and go back to the original motion. So I'm not, go back to the original motion that was on the floor. Um, I'm going to call for that motion. That was a request for one clerk. All in favor? Any opposed? It passed three-one. One. Thank you, thank you, Judge.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mo.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next item is item number fourteen. We have our HR and Risk Management Director, Ms. Amanda Shoemaker, and Dean Hayes, Bob Seville, uh, requesting approval to renew the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four property and casualty insurance policy. Hello. Hello, everyone. We're seeking the approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four property and casualty insurance policy renewal in an amount of one million, three hundred and one, two hundred and nine, um, dollars. And with that, I'll turn it over to our insurance broker, Mr. Dean Hayes.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Newton County for allowing us, me and my McGriff team, to participate in the, uh, request for proposal process. We were really excited to do that, and, uh, we're even more excited when you guys chose us to act as your insurance broker and risk management consultant. Um, I will tell you, this is not a, uh, a transactional relationship that we're entering into. This is very much a, a long-term partnership. Um, it's a long time of almost twenty-five years. Resident of Newton County, I'm looking forward to working with Amanda and Pamela and the other department heads to strengthen and bolster the risk management program, uh, and over time, bring down your total cost of risk. Um, so along those lines, we are, we have already started, I think, with, uh, with a good foot forward. We're very, very happy, um, with the proposal that we presented. Uh, and I assume all of you have, uh, been provided the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four insurance summary that was provided. Um, first of all, I'll tell you, uh, this is one of the better, if not the best, um, renewal proposal we've delivered in probably six months. The insurance marketplace continues to firm and harden, as I know Stan will, will attest to that. Um, if you look there, uh, just on a macro level, you look at the total cost, you say, oh, no, it's up twelve or thirteen percent. Well, it is, but understand your insurance premiums are based on your exposures and that's tracking along with your, your budget. So that is usually indicative of an insurance program that is, uh, you know, flat, if you will. Further to that, um, just so you'll know, the, the premiums that are in the expiring column are the premiums that were a snapshot going in last year at the annual term. Um, this proposal that we're providing you has, I think, almost seventy more vehicles than you had, uh, on the prior term. Uh, and we also increased the property, uh, values by fifty-one million dollars. So, you know, net-net, we were, we're pretty happy with that, um, for the renewal. Uh, some net pickups, uh, that we were able to provide, um, for the county this year. Um, first of all, we, uh, we, we greatly, uh, enhanced the terrorism policy form. You guys had traditionally carried a standalone terrorism policy. Uh, we were able to get that premium down a little bit. It was only a hundred dollars, but you got to remember that's based on that additional fifty million dollars in property values primarily, also the, the additional vehicles. So that was a net-net savings, uh, for the county that we were very hap- happy to provide. Also, you will note that on the, uh, public officials liability, uh, we were able to bring that premium down about twenty thousand dollars a year and bring your retention down from four hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand, um, for the retention, uh, for that coverage form. Now, in all honesty, we did bring the limit down from five million to three million. Um, but in talking to everybody, you know, at, at the county and, and with our risk management experts, you know, uh, that was certainly worth the trade-off. A, a five million dollar limit for public officials liability is way on the top side of, of what people normally have. Um, we also, probably the biggest pickup we were able to provide was on the, uh, the cyber liability policy. Um, we were able to bring that premium down, uh, significantly, you know, about twenty-five percent. Um, but more importantly, we were able to, um, get the fifty percent co-insurance, uh, clause removed from the social engineering and, and ransomware form, and also increase the ransomware p- uh, policy limit, uh, from five hundred thousand to a million dollars. So all in all, we're very pleased. Um, we're just getting started. Um, this is a relationship that we're going to really work hard with the county, with, with my team, with the team, uh, at Seville and Associates from a claims, a risk control, uh, safety management perspective to drive your total cost of risk down. Like I said, it's going to take time, uh, but I'm really excited that we've, I think we've started off on the right foot, um, with our first, uh, first renewal with you guys for October first. So happy to answer any, uh, questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, um, I seek a motion, please. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand this. So if, if we were to have an accident in one of the shared deputy cars, how much would the insurance pay? Or would we be responsible? I think at one point it was like three hundred, the first three hundred thousand dollars we had to pay. Is this kind of where we at now?
Yes, and, uh, I think you're asking me about the retentions. Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yes. You're right, there, the, the city, I mean, the county is now on a large deductible program or a self-insurance program to some degree, where you've got a large retention and you're insuring the larger losses over that retention amount. But, uh, in all honesty, with someone with any insured that we may have that's paying this kind of premium, a, a, a high deductible is in your favor. Um, a guaranteed cost program, you're relying totally on the insurance company. In this environment, we have much more flexibility to handle claims. Um, we, we have got a TPA, which, by the way, we were able to negotiate with your third-party administrator. We did bring the, uh, the, the fee for the risk management and claim services down about forty percent for the year as well.
I guess the question I'm asking is, and this goes to the calendar, if we paying out, if, if we paying for every accident we have, then why are we paying you? I, I'm, 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 I'm trying to understand this. I, I guess it's to Patrick.
Well, the, I would, I would suggest that you, you're, you're correct. I think we do have an awful lot of, um, automobile liability claims. I don't know the total amount, but.
A total what?
The automobile liability claims. I think we do get a lot of them. And the bulk of those are relatively low, at least compared to your limit. You know, I, I can't think of one in Newton County that's, that would have hit that three hundred thousand dollar mark in recent memory. So it's a trade-off. The lower the li- the lower that deductible, the higher your policy rate would be, right? So I, I have not run the numbers to see what the difference would be if you lowered that deductible, but you are, you do pay a lot in automobile claims. So, uh, that's just the nature of, we, we crash a lot of cars, that's the nature of public service, public safety.
Right, well, I have, I have, I have one last, one last, uh, I guess, question. So are we, are we shopping for some insurance? Because I think there was something that Ronnie had talked about a while back, a few months back, was that, and he said it, I'm in a spot, and he probably corrected me, can I always correct it? And he said that, um, we're in trouble, so we're in trouble because we're self-insured, and it doesn't seem like we're going to have an end. And the taxpayers is putting to be, how much money have we spent, I guess, this year so far, on paying for those, um, um, accidents? Is it four or five million, two million, ten million, fifteen million? How much? And I, I guess this question goes to Ms. Cooper.
I think this year, it's only been like a hundred and thirty-five thousand. I talked with, um, Director White a couple of days ago. Of course, the claims are a little bit behind, but, you know, being self-insured at this point, um, this past year, knock on wood, um, since we have been self-insured and have a, um, high retention, we've actually done pretty good.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we appreciate all that you're doing to help out our beautiful and great county. So are we trying to find somebody to insure us, or is it, are we asking too much?
Well, we, yeah, we, we, we have secured these quotes and we're recommending some changes to the carriers to better the program for a lower cost, and I'm confident you can see that we've, we've done that. It's not where we want to wind up, of course, this is just a start, but we're, we're starting in the right direction.
End of more discussion. Commissioner Cowan.
Um, I'm sorry, but I'm still waiting on a consultant. I want an independent consultant to make a review of everything that they come across to advise the board. Insurance is complicated, and it's complicated that they're comfortable with it because it's their language. But a lot of y'all up here don't understand that. Um, I hope that we get a consultant on board. I'd like to see him on board before I even vote to approve his contract. That's just how I feel about it. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Cowan, as you know, the, the proposal's out now, and, uh, it concludes on September twenty eighth, and we have about thirty-one potential applicants, but no one has actually requested or downloaded the inform- well, they've downloaded the information, but no one has actually submitted their proposal as of yet.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? It failed, it failed three-two, thank you. Uh, it failed, it failed three-two. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number fifteen, being presented by the Tax Commissioner's Office. Ms. Margaret Smith will respond on behalf of Newton County Tax Commissioner's Office. We have a citizen, Mr. Ralph Ivy, a Newton, Newton County citizen, owes several years in back taxes. Is Mr. Ivy here? Mr. Ivy owes several years in back taxes and is asking the BOC to waive all penalties and interest on unpaid taxes, back taxes owed for his secondary property for the years twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. Mr. Ivy?
First, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I would like to let you guys know that, uh, I am a citizen of Newton County for the last thirty years. Uh, this property in question here was purchased in nineteen ninety-six and.
Sir, I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, um, once again, I'm, I'm a Newton County citizen for the last thirty years, and the property here in question, um, was, was purchased in ninety-six, and this is the first time we ever had any, uh, delinquents, uh. And I guess, um, I would like to bring to your attention, the years in question was during the, uh, pandemic, uh, timeframe, which, um, I wasn't able to collect rent from, from some of the tenants that was in the property. And me doing my part, um, during the pandemic, um, I didn't look to recoup that from those tenants, uh, due to the circumstances. And, uh, so, um, and also I'd like to bring to your attention, during this timeframe, the property value on this property did decrease, and no adjustments were made. value on this property did decrease, and no adjustments were made in my favor during this timeframe. So, I guess I'm asking the board here for some type of consideration here, not on the taxes themselves, but just the penalty. I just think they were a little excessive, but that's the request that I have from the board to take in consideration the pandemic and all the things that we had to endure during that timeframe, and ask that you help absorb some of this.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. You had something?
Oh, no.
You want to add something?
Well, I just wanted to make a note that he was asking for us to waive the penalties and interest. So, he owes total eight thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. The amount of the penalties and interest for twenty-twenty, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Twenty-one was, twenty-twenty-one is seven hundred forty-one dollars and forty-five cents, and then twenty-twenty-two is three hundred eighty-six dollars and nine cents, which is a total of one thousand nine hundred four dollars and ninety-seven cents that we would be waiving if you guys decide to waive, and he still have an outstanding balance of six thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. So, we were requesting if he can pay, make, before we waive the penalties and interest, that he would be obligated to pay the delinquent taxes, which is the six thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay, thank you. I seek a motion, please. I think this is-
All right, I'm going to make a motion not to approve the payment of taxes for these particular pieces of property.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number sixteen by our Transportation Director, Mr. Chester Clegg. Public Works is requesting approval by the Board of Commissioners for additional funding with NOVA for the materials testing and inspection services for the CR-511 Brown Bridge Road at Yellow River Bridge Replacement Project PI-0015096, and the CR-511 Brown Bridge Road at Snapping Shoals Creek Bridge Replacement Project PI-0015097.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. NOVA is providing construction inspection services and testing services for two projects, the two bridge replacements on Brown Bridge Road, and they show up and test the concrete, the soil, and they have to do testing as much as required depending on the schedule of the contractor and so forth. So, it was a little bit difficult to estimate originally what the testing service would cost, but they are requesting an additional forty-nine thousand four hundred and ten dollars to finish up the two projects, like I said, testing the concrete, soil, that sort of thing.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes five oh.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number seventeen. That's going to come from Ms. Kennedy Shannon with iParametrics, our county manager, also Mr. Cooper. iParametrics VOC Purchasing is requesting approval of iParametrics Amendment Number One, ARAP Consultant Contract. Amendment Number One, amount four hundred twenty thousand dollars with the total contract price not to exceed eight hundred forty thousand dollars, and the funding source would be ARPA funds.
I'm actually going to yield to our attorney. Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. So, this proposed amendment comes to you from iParametrics, who is the consultant managing and administering your ARPA program. And if you recall, the ARPA, the fee paid to the consultant is ten percent of the money that they're essentially running, the programs that they're running. They charge a ten percent fee based on the amount put into the programs. At present, you have now put into the programs eight hundred and forty, eight million four hundred thousand. Originally, they were only running programs that managed four point two million. So, to keep their ten percent fee, they've requested an amendment to the contract to increase it to the ten percent of the amount of the money put into the programs that they're operating, which would be up to eight hundred and forty thousand.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please.
So moved, I said about the county attorney.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
The first thing, question I have, is this the final amount? Are there any other, because it's like the third time we've had to increase it, second or third time. So, is there, is this the final amount for the consultant, or is there more money coming back to ask for additional funds? I need to know that information before I actually vote.
I would say if they are asked to manage additional programs with additional money, they would come back for that additional money. So, if you were, for instance, to say, we're going to create a new program, and I mean, you're basically, you're almost out of money, but in theory, if you had another two million dollars of ARPA funds to administer, and they were asked to administer those programs, they would be asking for ten percent of that additional money. I don't think there's, and I think Harold or Britton's-
There's no new programming on the horizon.
Okay, because we had a budget that was set that the commissioners voted on, so I just wanted to make sure that we're actually going by the budget that's set for ARPA. And then my second question, since we're speaking on ARPA, before you came, county manager, there was an organization that was presented by our Accountability Court that has submitted a request to get on the agenda for the ARPA mental health since July. I sent that email to you. And so, that's a part of our ARPA mental health, and Ms. Kennedy came before us, before you came on board, to work with our former accountability manager, and that organization has been trying to get on the agenda to present for our mental health dollars for ARPA. So, if we can please respond to them, that would be great.
Will do.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I guess this question to Mr. Cooper, is how many employees does she have? Because I know recently, we asked Ms. Laurel if she could bring on about a few people, maybe about five, who would assist the seniors in their home repairs.
I couldn't hear the first part of your question.
I said, how many employees does Ms. Kennedy have?
How many who?
Employees, the people who are assisting her, helping her with these programs.
We have staff, they have a staff of about five people with iParametrics, but then I also know that, you know, from a grounds operation perspective, we had like a staff of eight when you think about Ms. Laurel and her team.
Right, so does that come out the same pot of money that she's requesting, or is that coming out another?
There is no new appropriations of funding that'll need to be added, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders?
Just to speak on the ARPA piece, I know we have funding left over from our small business and nonprofit. Is that coming back around again?
So, I'm glad that you brought up the small business piece, because actually, I want to come before this board and ask for an extension. The application process concluded at August, on August tenth, and we have approximately six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars still left, and we have about eighty more registered small businesses in the queue, and I wanted to get an extension from the board to make sure that those applicants are processed as well.
If we can do more marketing and promotion, because I've been coming across a lot of businesses that had no idea that this was even put in place. So, I think that's another lax of why you're not getting responses, even so from the nonprofits. I still have people even asking about the senior services program, the senior program. They were not aware. So, we have to figure out a better way to market our services and get it out to the people. I don't know if we need to do newsletters, because everybody's not on social media. Everybody's not following the county website, so we got to figure out a way of how to reach our constituency.
Definitely.
All in favor? Any opposed? It passes three-two, thank you.
Chairman, we're at item number eighteen, citizen comments.
Next on the agenda, citizen comments. Thank you so much. This is an opportunity to allow citizens to make comments. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Joseph Reed. I live at one oh one oh nine Finish Drive, Covington, and I was, wanted a question about the small business. I filled out the application for the small business, and I never received an email back to, they said I needed to have more information, but I never received the email back, so they closed the porter. So, I was wondering whether I'd be able to go back in the porter and finish filling out my information.
We'll make sure that you're able to.
Huh?
We'll make sure that you're able to. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I can see it was quite uncomfortable with the gentleman requesting that we waive the penalties and interest. From a personal side, I wanted to help that gentleman, but we're going to, I think we're going to see more and more of that. I believe we're going to see more and more of that. So, I don't, I don't know how we, if we address that on a case-by-case basis, I don't know. You know, there's got to be, maybe the county attorney can make some recommendations, but it's just, you know, it's semi-heart-wrenching to see someone, not necessarily on a rental property, but, you know, for instance, an elderly lady standing in front of us that can't pay a thousand dollars in penalties. It's tough to say no. So, I just wanted to put that out there. I know it's, you know, we're paid to take care of the county, I understand that, but the county has citizens too. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, I can, I can address a little bit of that, and I'm not prepared to give you a complete answer, but I can tell you, the law allows the Board of Commissioners to delegate the authority to waive penalties and interest to the tax commissioner. So, you could rid yourself theoretically of that burden and also the burden of people having to come to the board meeting and make the request. The problem with that is, and I can't speak for the tax commissioner, wouldn't attempt to, some tax commissioners don't want that authority. Some tax commissioners want the governing authority to exercise that power, and if the tax commissioner refuses to accept that power, you're stuck with it again. But I'll certainly look into the law and see if there's anything else we can do other than delegating it to the tax commissioner.
Commissioner Edwards, I mean, Commissioner Mason, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple announcements. One announcement I wanted to announce, that GABCO, the Georgia Association of Black County Officials, is doing a social media do's and don'ts for elected officials. So, for those elected officials that would like to be a part of that on Tuesday, October the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at the Georgia State Bar from six-thirty to eight-thirty, you can actually go to gabcoonline.org or gabco online via Facebook or Instagram. You can also go to tinyurl.com forward slash G-A-B-C-O-S-M to actually RSVP for that as well. Also, I know Congressman Hank Johnson also put out for the fourth district officials and nonprofit organizations, they have the USDA Healthy Food Financing Initiative, where they are actually providing, it's a program that you can submit your application by November the third at eleven fifty-nine P.M. This program will offer up to thirty thousand dollars in grant funding to support partnerships between organizations from different sectors that will work together at the local, state, or regional level to improve access to fresh, healthy, affordable food by providing financial and technical assistance to eligible projects. So, I did want to put that out there as well to those nonprofit organizations. You can get up to thirty thousand dollars in grant funding applied by November the third at eleven fifty-nine P.M. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Mr. C. I wanted to, this October sixth and seventh, I'm excited about that. It actually, it's at capacity, the Third Annual Newton County Ladies Retreat. This year, the committee of volunteers decided to do two days. One, October sixth is a mind, body, and soul with the ladies, as we actually love on each other. It's a pajama-type event where they're coming, they're presentable pajamas, and we have an opportunity to go through health and wellness and various things for women. And then October seventh, they want to do a ladies' prom this year, which I'm excited about, and so we're doing a ladies' prom. It's for girls from ten to seventeen, bringing their mentors, their mothers, their sisters, and so forth. And to make sure that those women who are, those ladies and women who are, who won't be deterred from coming to the ladies' prom because it's formal, on September thirtieth, we have a formal dress donation. I've already been giving dresses to give to those ladies who want to come, who don't have those formal dresses and gowns so they can feel beautiful. So, on September thirtieth, we have a dress donation from twelve to one, I mean, eleven to twelve, so I'm excited about that. I also just came from the Local Progress Conference in St. Louis, just to let you know, you have to be nominated or be referred to be a member of Local Progress, which I'm excited about, because that's the second actual organization I was asked to be a part of. I'm also a Fair Fight Fellow with Stacey Abrams. And so, at that conference was just amazing, because it wasn't only just elected officials from the commission side. It was school board members, city council, commissioners, and as well as some state reps and so forth. And what we do is we come together and create policies for those communities underserved who cannot fight for themselves, whether it be LGBTQ communities, whether it be your Native Americans or Hispanics and so forth, or African-Americans, and also, I'm glad our judge came before us in regards to rent control. We had a ceremony to where we saw all of the officials who represent those municipalities and counties who put in place rent control and stabilization, where you cannot just evict someone. They put various things in place to stop homelessness, and I actually forwarded those policies over to our board, so hopefully we can look at that and can also help our magistrate court, our probate judge, in regards to eviction and increasing the numbers, because we know a lot of landlords are evicting residents, and it's unlawful. So, we want to make sure we put those various things in place. Some of the actual programs that we had, we had dealing with backlash. I mean, that session was not one dry eye in the room. To hear the stories from elected officials and what they've gone through, it was, it was just overwhelming. Not one dry eye was in that session. We also toured St. Louis Neighborhood Violization Area to where the government and nonprofits purchase homes and revitalize them to make the neighborhood look better. So, that means the counties are coming together with the cities to make sure they revitalize various neighborhoods. How to support the unhoused neighbors, interim solutions, and fighting back against criminalization. So, we had sessions like that. We had legal strategies, how local communities and officials have rights to fight back, and how, and in regard, again, the rent stabilization. So, these conferences are a must, and that's why you always hear me speak on traveling to conferences and learning outside of your community. If we constantly stay in Newton County, and I love Newton County, but there are a lot of other counties that are doing great and wonderful things that we can bring back to our communities to make our communities better. You have to go out and learn. You have to go get the information, because if not, we're going to be stagnant and we're going to stay in the exact same place. We want a better county. Our county is growing. We have various things that are coming into the community, so we have to make sure we do our part, and that's education. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. C. What I have is, it's kind of short, and you know- What I have is, it's kind of short, and, um, you know, we've always talked about our community. We talk about right here. And we talked about all the programs and stuff that we should bring here. And we should bring programs here, and we should help people. But what's the problem that we have here is not having people who are willing to go out and work for to make our community better. It's our job, people up here. It's our job to make our community better. It's our job to work for programs in our community. That is our job. And so far, uh, we're not doing that, and we should be doing that. Uh, so what I'm asking and what I've said, and I guess I got a little bit of a campaign going on, is to vote. If you're not, if you're pleased with what we're doing, don't worry about it. Don't vote. If you're not pleased with what we're doing, vote. That's your right. This is your county. These are your dollars. It's up to you to have your money spent the way you would like for it to spend, be spent, and for the program and stuff to make our community better. And that's what we need to do, and that's what I'm all about. Early voting, let's vote, let's vote, let's raise the vote, let's vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate everybody, uh, probably looking at me and saying, what is wrong with him? Uh, I had knee replacement surgery just about two weeks ago, and, uh, it's, it's hurting. But for all those that y'all have prayed for me and, uh, everything, I do appreciate that. And I just want to say thank y'all. I love Newton County. I always have. And, uh, we're gonna continue to serve the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There is a need for executive session tonight. Land acquisition, we will come back up here and dismiss. I seek a motion that we move into executive session, please. There's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and a second by Commissioner, uh, Mason. All in favor? All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? All in favor? All in favor? Yes, okay. Five oh. Two motions. Okay. I seek a motion that we move back into our regular scheduled meeting. Can I get a second? There's been a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Mason. Patrick? I thought you had two motions.
Well, the motion reconvene, motion adjourned.
Oh, maybe. I s- I get a mo- I seek a motion that we adjourn, please. Can I get a second? There's been a motion by Commissioner Mason, a second by Commissioner Sanders. All in favor? Stand adjourned.